Alrighty, so now we're gonna move into the public comment portion of the meeting. I would just like to remind everybody that the board takes this time. We dedicate this time to hearing the public comment and we encourage the public to come speak.
My name is José Luis Chávez. And I'm here to speak in support of having space for school-based health center, which be the Marilac Clinic at Grand Junction High School. I know there are individuals who will speak on, is it a proper role for a school district? Do we have health clinics inside schools? The answer is yes, unless we are a community who does not care about the mental health of our youth. The argument that Marilac will be like health clinics in California, just to me a red herring. It is intended to be misleading and distracting. And I'm sure you'll hear other thoughts which will include, which are focused on misleading and distracting information. When we look at social determinants of health, some of the items we need to focus on are depression, stress, anxiety, and social connectiveness. When we look at data from the school district 51, it shows that in the fall of '22, we have forty-two percent of our secondary students feel they are connected to their school. So fifty-eight percent of our secondary students do not feel connected. Let that sink in a minute. Fifty-eight percent do not have any connection to their schools. We know D-51 requires written or verbal consent of parents prior to any school health centers treating their child. When we look at Central's Wellness Center, they report that they did one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five were for behavioral health reasons. They provided one thousand eighteen depression screenings and treated four hundred and eighty-two visits for stress, five hundred and sixty-six for anxiety, five thirty for depression. You know as well as I, Central High School Wellness Center saved at least one person from taking their life. And that is enough reason to have a wellness center, not only at Junction High School, but in all of our high schools. If it is not then, as a community, we really need to take a look how we feel about mental health issues with our youth. Once again, I strongly support Marilac, a trusted medical facility at Grand Junction High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Patricia Whistler, and on deck, we have Jennifer Tyler.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Patrice Whistler. I'm a pediatrician here in Grand Junction. Mental health is very important, but also is physical health. We do have students who do not have a primary care physician. I would love them to all come to a pediatrician or a family doc, but some don't. We have student athletes who might get a quick injury and just need to be seen on the field. I know you're an athlete supporter, and so is everyone here. So those student health centers, the school-based health clinics are just really important. It is also okay for twelve and up to choose their own mental health provider without parent permission, if need be, in the state of Colorado. That is law. And so our depressed kids can get services, our anxious kids can get services. We have one of the highest suicide rates in the whole country and also in the state of Colorado, here in Mesa County, and we don't even know why, in adults as well as kids. So prevention is weigh the pound of cure. There's great nurse practitioners and mental health people there. And I support a school-based health clinic everywhere we can do it. Thank you very much.
I'm amazed at some of the comments we're hearing here. I am not exactly sure that they're all thought out, but I hope in some cases they actually are.
Good evening. I come to you as a concerned parent, community member, and teacher. I thank you on this medical center for not just jumping in and making decisions based on heart, but principles when it comes to our kids. The shiny packaging looks and sounds amazing. It is when it's unwrapped where the questions come. What are we agreeing to? I know that in education, we believe in early intervention. We've always said early intervention with academics. So why not teach families? Why wait till high school? Why not teach families how to advocate instead of enabling them? Community leaders have some excellent ideas around how to help at the elementary levels as well. That is the true definition of early intervention. Families, not only kids, need these resources. Regarding the current center, is it true that thirteen hundred combined student staff and parents were a consensus out of twenty-two thousand students and families? Is parental consent a one-and-done at the beginning? Are there other obligations or agreements around consent? In the current MOU, so I did listen to the meeting last week and I went back and got some information. In the current MOU, I read that obligations of the district to provide all utilities, designate the school principal as the liaison, problem solver, assist medical sponsor, develop annual budget, they are already maxed with what they currently have to do. So I'm not sure that asking them to take that on is fair. As I read through last week's presentation on slide twenty, it lists the type of treatment. And in that table on the other side, no age limit, is this true? Age-appropriate reproductive health services state, and I do understand, I think our state has gone to that twelve and a half years. I ask that you look at long-term, bigger picture here than just right now. It's not just the shiny wrapping on the outside. Education and healthcare are separate entities, and the possible unforeseen consequences of commingling the two could have lasting unintended effects. Thank you.
Thanks for this chance to speak on the importance of school-based healthcare clinics and the importance of keeping Grand Junction High School's clinic available as an option. School-based healthcare clinics provide innumerable benefits to our students, parents, and the community as a whole. In-house school clinics provide students with a chance to receive appropriate and timely healthcare services, all while on campus. The ease of surfaces drastically cuts down on missed classes, giving students a chance to stay focused on their learning. Having a quick and easy access to routine health services also allows student athletes to limit their time away from the field and their teams. While limiting student absences, school clinics also allow parents and caregivers to stay focused on their jobs and employment matters. As we all know from the pandemic, having students out of school is a major disruption to the work-life of those caring for students of all ages. Finally, Central High School's program has demonstrated that providing easily accessible healthcare services can be done with appropriate parent notification and involvement. The trained, certified, and licensed professionals have shown that we have great safeguards in place to keep parents and guardians involved in their students' health, healthcare plans, just like as they would at their primary care providers' offices. As a parent of two future Grand Junction High School students, the limiting or loss of an in-house healthcare clinic would be a great missed opportunity to my family and the community as a whole. Please focus on all the good that is being done in these clinics and do not focus on the more sensational, unproven fears. Thank you for your time and for your understanding of the importance of providing on-campus healthcare facilities. Thanks.
What is D-51 school district's focus? And in my opinion, it's to deliver quality education to the students within the district. Delivering education doesn't have an agenda other than to teach the basic core academics to produce students that are successful academically, socially, emotionally. All is in stated in the strategic plan released by Dr. Hill. We totally agree that the high school doesn't need to add an outside business like the Marilac Clinic in the new high school. In our opinion, by doing so, it implies D-51 is endorsing this clinic and its practices, not to mention the statement in the MOU that says the space would be provided rent-free. Other concerns we have are the clinic, by the way of state grants, basically taking its orders from the Colorado Department of Health with strings attached. We believe the current distrust of the medical profession, i.e. the COVID guidelines and the vaccine mandates, et cetera, and the law that removes parental consent leaves the school district in a very vulnerable position. Is the school district at risk of being sued for unauthorized care? Marilac already has two existing clinics operating in Grand Junction, so their services are readily available locally, but not under the umbrella of the D-51 school district. Another issue that came up during the meeting was in regard to the bond issue. Because there was no mention of the clinic going into the new high school, it seems unfair to the voters to assume that all would be in favor. In the results of their own survey, mental health issues were at the top of the list. And not only is this information troubling, it's also something that should be discussed with family. It seems to us that a better approach to D-51 would be to bring in their own health professional to take this on. That way, the information would be kept within the district's control and the parents. Looking through the strategic plan put forth by Dr. Hill, there are a lot of very aggressive goals that have yet to be met, and some as early as this coming June. To us, this clinic question is just a distraction that burns time and is needed to attain these goals. Thank you for your time.
When you think in life, in sports, in businesses, the ones that are most successful are the ones that are able to successfully focus down onto the issues that really apply to them. And things that D-51 has done very well, you've been very well on fiscal responsibility. Unquestionably, really fantastic there. When COVID hit, D-51 versus the rest of the state academically improved fifteen percent versus the whole rest of the state of Colorado for the academic performance, and that was in the CMAS tests. That's something that you all did very well, you know, keeping the schools open. I'm gonna bring this all around now to the clinic. And so the Marilac Clinic, you know, my focus is what D-51 has done well is focusing on academics, focusing on fiscal responsibility, and those are the things that you need to focus on. And that's what you're doing. The clinic, it's a distraction. It would take you away a lot of your focus, time, and energy. And what I just learned about the principal would have to help them with the plan and the MOU, that's not good. So anything that's a distraction away from your primary focus of education, to me, we should stay away from that. And the bond issue, D-51 was in conversation with Marilac Clinic for several years before that bond came out. The bond was put to the voters. There was no mention of the clinic in the bond that went out to the voters. And so to me, by not mentioning that, you know, people that were voting on new Grand Junction High School, they had no idea that clinic might have been part of the equation. That may or may not have affected the way they would have voted on that bond. But by not having it in there, it's almost like a lie of omission. Just, you know, there should have been some kind of mention. But anyway, just to make a long story short, continue to focus on the things that you do well. Education, you know, the education of our children, that's what you all have been doing well. Need to continue to focus that way. And clinic could be a distraction, so I just encourage you to, you know, clinic could be great, but keep it off-site. Don't put it in school. Find some other place for it, but not inside the high school.
I'm a patient of Marilac Student-Based Wellness Center at Central. And I think the best way to start this is by saying, there's absolutely no way I'd be here talking in front of you guys without the help of the Wellness Center. My Wellness Center, when it first opened, I would pop my head in and I'd be too scared to go in and say hi to the staff. But after making my first appointment, the staff there have helped me so much. Having someone like Stephen, our behavioral specialist, has helped me improve my social anxiety, my fears of getting surgery, and so much more. And it's not just Stephen. Rosa Gardner has also helped made a huge impact on my life. For me, going to the doctor meant my pain being ignored or oversimplified. But Rosa, who is now my primary care provider, has gone out of her way to find me answers to my pain. Finding me a specialist in Denver and Utah, she is the first doctor to make me feel validated in my pain, to listen to me and to listen to me. The Wellness Center is the first time I've felt comfortable talking to medical professionals. It is somewhere I can go and have a quick chat on a bad day and leave feeling better. That's what makes the Wellness Center so important to me. I wouldn't have made it this far medically or even be able to speak to you right now without it. And that's why I personally think all schools should have access to this resource. Whether it's something small like drama with friends or feeling your absolute worst, having a safe, confidential place to go to in school is reassuring, and every student should have that place. It shouldn't be a question of if schools should have these centers, but a question of how soon.
My name is Wendy Wood. I actually attended your, I think it was a work session, last Wednesday evening and learned a little bit more about this proposed clinic. Dr. Hill shared some information. There are just a few things on here that I really, I have some questions about, but it says the type of treatment that this clinic would offer is contraceptive information, procedures, and supplies. And that is without any kind of parental consent. That's pretty concerning to me personally. That's very vague. It doesn't say what those procedures could potentially be, and even pregnancy-related care. There's also, oh, there's no age limit. It just says sexually transmitted infections. I just, in general, knowing, you know, my own children and the things they've gone through in life, just to the idea that they could just go and deal with those things, and it's one more step to keep parents out of the loop. It's one more step that removes them as the actual primary guardians over their children. It's concerning because our children, they really need their parents through these difficult things. Not every parent is there for them, I understand that. But there is accessible healthcare in this valley. And it is not, this is one of those notions that continually purported that there's not free and accessible healthcare. But where is the evidence for that? There was a time when I had, you know, I had my children, we were on CHP. I was a single mom for a time. We were even on food stamps at one time. And when we came out of that place where we no longer needed those services, that's just one point, saying that I want to see the evidence that shows that that is actually a reason for this. There's a lot of, I would say buzzwords that are out there about this that say this is the reasons we need these clinics. But I would really caution us to be wise and discerning over these decisions in what are the strings attached to these things? Because none of these gifts are ever free. There's always some stipulations that come later on. And if we're not asking the hard questions and looking deeply at it, we might just be getting another Trojan horse. Thank you.
So I was coming up to speak about the Marilac Clinic. The first gentleman that came up tonight said that District 51 requires parental consent before treatment at the clinic. The second speaker was a pediatrician that explained how the law in Colorado states that children twelve and above get to choose their own mental health care without parental consent. Now, I was at the last meeting and it became very clear that District 51 actually doesn't require parental consent for care at the medical clinic. And as the representatives for Marilac said, the law trumps whatever policy District 51 sets up. The pediatrician that spoke also only mentioned mental health care. She failed to mention the therapeutic drugs and even medical procedures that are also currently or could be legally available without parental consent. She also failed to mention how the laws are going further and further that direction. And we have major national teachers' unions and other groups pushing those laws further away from parental autonomy. So what I have to say is that you, as a board, do not have to do this. And you don't. This means that if you vote yes, as a board member, whatever happens with the clinic, good or bad, is on you, as a board member and as a board. So with our current laws, there is no legal way for you to bring a clinic into the school without stepping between parents and their kids' medical care. In voting for this, you are now, as a board, stepping in between myself and other parents and their kids' medical care, including whatever future medical care that our state decides to put into law that violates our ability as parents to advocate or even be aware of what's going on with our own kids. I support you all, caring about kids and their health, including their mental health. And the idea that you can't care about kids without doing this is not true. You can care about them, you can care about health, you can do this and support any type of medical care outside of the school system without jumping between parents and their kids. And we all would probably disagree a little bit about what types of medical or mental health care could potentially help our culture or kids in general anyways. Do we all agree about everything? So we're only gonna put one type of medical clinic in one school and only give that to kids? Or are we gonna open up Pandora's box and bring in every medical center, every type of care? Because, you know, we're a community. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Redeker. I just wanted to speak about the clinic a little bit. And I think it's good for you to get to your core work, whatever you're, you know, what is it? You're all about education. I kind of found it hilarious that, you know, a couple of months ago, we were talking about, you know, are we gonna be a swimming center and develop Olympic swimmers, right? So the pool thing over there. And then the next day, the boiler blew out. So, I mean, you know, we're not in the pool business and we're not in the health business. Biological health, mental health, things along that line. Should we have referrals to something? Oh, sure, go ahead and do that and refer it. But I think what's gonna happen is you'd be opening yourself up to potential lawsuits. It's not really if, but when. For instance, we heard about the twelve-year-old age, you know, for, you know, care. And at twelve, that's sixth grade. Tonight, we're also talking about, do we combine buildings in Fruta for sixth-grade elementary? And, or, you know, where do we put them with high school and things like that? If we put things in perspective, let's just remember they're kids and they're our parents, and we should not be stepping in between, especially with the medical care. Going on to the parental consent versus parental notification. If somebody wants to come in for an abortion, an RU-486 pill, they got up to forty-nine days, they can get it and they can notify the parents, but the notification is different than the consent form. Right there on the website says they don't, you don't need parental consent. So you can notify the parents and they can try to stop it, but the school or the medical facilitating this can still give that RU-486 to this gal. You're opening yourself up to a potential lawsuit because if there's an allergic reaction, psychological care, all these other things, you're not in the business of doing these things. You know, with the legal ramifications, like I said, it's not a matter of if, but when. You've just gotta reconsider this. If somebody needs that, if you're putting it in rent-free, that's another kind of goofy business decision. Because why should we be on, you know, on the hook for all these kind of bills? Have them then find land maybe next to, you know, the school or something like that and let them figure it out. And if it's convenient, then they, you know, just go over that away. And that's all I have to say. I'm against it. It's laudable, but it's a poor business decision with ramifications.
First of all, I want to thank the board. I really appreciate all the hard work everyone's been doing. I'm here to talk about the clinic as well. Excuse me. The human brain in the area of judgment does not fully develop till we're in our twenties. So how can a twelve-year-old make a rational decision that may affect them, you know, twenty years down the road? I don't think that's possible. Twelve-year-olds can't legally drive, drink, smoke, or vote. I don't get it at all. I understand the idea that it seems it's, having a clinic in a school is convenient. You may be reaching kids who wouldn't otherwise, as people have said, go to the doctor or get mental health assistance. But I think it has no place in the school. Depending on what your news source is, and I know what mine are, there are things going on in clinics and schools all over the country in various cities. You know, this is a time when kids are very vulnerable. A lot of kids are having trouble feeling good about themselves. They care about friends, middle school and high school kids. Their hormones are racing, their bodies are developing. A lot of them are confused. And there are people who are not good-intentioned. And they're giving out hormones, they're doing the transgender hormone therapy. I'll say it, no one else has said that yet, but that is going on in these clinics, as well as birth control and also vaccines. And I don't see where a twelve-year-old has any ability to make those kinds of decisions that are gonna affect them later in life. I think this is opening up a can of worms, it's going down a slippery slope, and it's gonna come back at everybody. And I think it's really a disservice to the kids in the long run. We do have two Marilac clinics, as was mentioned. And most places take Medicaid for dental work or mental health or medical needs. And I don't think it has any place in our school. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to all the District 51 employees and teachers and the volunteers on this board. I appreciate all the service you do to our community and our kids. I'm here to talk about the health center in Grand Junction High School that is proposed. I just want to say this is not what voters voted for. And if this school district continues to ask for support from the community and then change the way that they use the funds, they're going to continue to erode the trust within this community and its taxpayers. I've already seen it happen in other instances many years ago. I've been here since nineteen eighty, so I have a long memory with some of the things that have happened in this school district that many other people maybe don't have. Either way, that's how I feel about this specific issue. I would like to see the school district focus on its number-one job, which is educating children. We saw tonight that there is room for improvement in that field. So until we have perfected that, I think that needs to continue to be the focus. And we need to not be looking at other areas and new things to start doing. I know we already have a health clinic at Central, but I think that adding it to the new Grand Junction High School is beyond the pale for me. Also, there is an existing Marilac clinic just less than one mile north of Grand Junction High School now. It's been there for more than twenty years. There are also other types of free healthcare services by Mesa County Public Health. And there is no lack of services in the valley. And if, well, I know that mental health issues are a concern for our students in the valley. And I completely agree that we should be looking at that. But let's make that the priority instead of a healthcare center. And maybe we need to be looking at how the district handles the staffing that handle those kinds of issues with students. And maybe even reprioritizing how counselors' roles are in schools. Instead of doing scheduling, maybe they could be doing more counseling. So I would rather see that we spend our money on direct student learning and not get distracted with other things. I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much, so much for your service.
On topic tonight, I haven't been here since the district decided that they wanted to bus, kids couldn't ride the bus unless they lived three miles from the school or something, and that got me really fired up. So that's been a while. I'm here to talk about and just be in support of a school-based health clinic. I think that you all have presented tonight a variety of data and mechanisms that you all base your decisions on, and it is very thorough, and there were a lot of questions asked. And I think that if you follow that path in making this decision, you will very likely find that school-based healthcare is going to lead to better outcomes and serve the goals that you guys have talked about tonight. I think that we are in the business of educating youth. And that can't be done if they show up hungry. It can't be done if they don't have a place to sleep close to where, if their basic needs aren't met. And a basic need is healthcare. And I do think that the school focuses on education, but you also focus on the whole-rounded student. And that includes all of those things. There's all the schools offer some sort of like clothing closet. We have our backpack program, we have food assistance, we have free lunch. So we don't just focus on teach those kids and the parents should be responsible for everything else. Because what we know and what we've learned over time, which is why we have these systems in place, is that those things are lacking and that these kids are not gonna come to school and learn or be able to do anything else unless their basic needs are met. And I know there's a lot of outliers and there's a lot of red flags throwing up about you're getting in between me and my child. But I'll tell you that I take my kids, I have three kids, take them to primary care. When I'm in the room, they say, you know, would you like to speak to me without your mom being here? And the answer is sometimes yes, and that's okay. That's their right. They're older, they're old enough, whatever the legal age is, and I'm not a lawyer up here. But they're allowed to speak with their clinician without me present. They're not getting in between me and my child. They're saying, there's some questions that you might want to be able to talk to me about without your mom sitting here and listening to all that, and maybe I can help you. And that happens all the time, every day. There's no one stepping in between, you know, if a school counselor meets with a youth and they tell him something, you're not stepping in between me and my child, you're doing your job, you're helping a student. And so I think that just follow the data, make a good decision, and- I think that just follow the data, make a good decision, and have these open conversations and not behind closed doors. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Trisha Weber, and on deck, Donald, looks like Hunger.
Hi, thanks for having me here tonight, and before I get on to my main topic, I just wanted to say, if you could have those meetings regarding Fruta at Redlands Middle School, and Fruta High School, instead of Grand Junction High School, because it's the Redlands kids that go to Fruta High School, most of them, there's some that go to Grand Junction High School, but there's a large population in the Redlands District, and I know you know that, so, thank you. I'm Trish Weber, I'm a parent and mother, I have graduated three kids from District 51 High School, I'm also a physician, and I care about affordable healthcare, and I also care about an excellent education. I am, I'm going to speak about duplication of services and privacy. I am concerned, because I was on a healthcare committee back in the mid, early 2000s, and our job was to provide affordable healthcare, to make sure there wasn't duplication of services, and so we had a vision to start Quality Health Network, where information was shared across this community regarding lab tests, and x-ray and imaging, so that we wouldn't duplicate services and decrease the cost of healthcare. As a school, you know how important it is to keep the care of, the cost of healthcare down, so that you can meet your budget, as we saw tonight. We were able to do that, I'm concerned that we are duplicating services here. The Mesa County Health Department has free disease screening and reproductive counseling for males and females, and it has a women's healthcare services, and that can all be provided free and under the guidelines that our state provides. We also have over 100 family practitioners and pediatricians, and we, that does not include nurse practitioners and PAs who also provide services in this community, and many of those family practice offices have behavioral health services in their office. The Merillac Health, federally qualified health center, are all federal employees by definition, they, by their website, have six clinics scattered throughout this town, so those services are provided, not just to children, but also to adults. You can't have random adults coming into high schools to get these services. Those clinics need to be where adults and children can get to those services that need those services. According to the newspaper, it said, over 2,000 students at Central High School visits were, have been obtained from August of 2020 to currently. That's, in, in 3,000 students, that's three-quarters of the students, my concern is that's an over-utilization of the system. Every time a student is seen, that generates a bill, and it may not be you paying it, but it is somebody paying it, and it's the federal government paying it, who's monitoring whether those are appropriate visits? I want the students to get the appropriate visits they need, that we have value-based healthcare, and that we're not over-utilizing and duplicating our system. Also, just quickly, there's a problem with patient data privacy when the federal government's collecting all the data on your students, thank you.
Next, we have Donald Hunger, and on deck, we have Karen Stahl.
Google, Facebook, General Electric, some of the most incredible corporations in the world, was founded on the education of this country. What I've seen happen, like with Kmart, Sears, Sears was Amazon, what happened? They got paradigm paralysis, they got locked into other areas, and they forgot what their core was. We are losing our education system. I'm a process engineer, I've studied with some of the greatest business minds in the world, I worked for Bridgestone, I helped set up their North American business culture, and what I see happening is, is people get their, they start juggling, and pretty soon they lose sight of what they're doing, and I'm telling you right now, I know it to be fact, when people start going out into different directions, they lose their focus, and they start to lose their abilities. Our education system is compromised. We need to focus on our children, and let me tell you, I want to dig deep into each and every one of you's hearts. I do not, when I raised my daughter, I don't want somebody making decisions for my daughter's healthcare, I don't want them giving them birth control, I want to know about that, I have that kind of relationship with my daughter, and I don't want that to be circumvented. If you do, that's okay, and I understand that, but please, don't take that right away from me. And what happens in California, it is not a red herring, what happens in California comes here, and we're looking at a Pandora's Box, and I'm telling you, I've studied the processes, the way the government works, and it is Pandora's Box. When they start prescribing gender-affirming medications to children without my approval, that goes to the heart of my fatherhood. Why, why don't we put clergy in our school systems? Why don't we put churches in there? That decision has been made a long time ago. Let the school be the school, and let the doctors be the doctors, there's not a single one of you that have a medical degree, this is not your decision to make. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be condescending, but think about your children here, it's just a matter of time before they start giving them gender-affirming medications. Do you want that to happen to your children? Because I don't, I don't. Thanks for letting me share, and thank you for all of your hard work.
Up next, we have Karen Stahl, and then, looks like Kirsten, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you all. I agree with all of the comments that were made about need for a step-and-ladder salary system for teachers, and I also think we need to look at purely putting more cash into that function for our schools, you can't junction, and I'm willing to pay more taxes to support that, and I think there are others who would be, and we need to start health clinics. I agree with the statements that have been made by others supporting them, I also care about the student-based health clinics, and I think there are others who would be, and we need to start tapping into that, and change that part of the system. I also care about the student-based health clinics, school-based health clinics. I agree with the statements that have been made by others supporting them, but I would like to add a couple of comments. Most of my work experience has been with families who are struggling, parents who don't necessarily not love their kids, but have been judged by society not to take adequate care of their kids, and you would be empowering a group of parents if they had the option of not taking off time from an hourly job, where they don't get paid, and have no unpaid leave, they have no paid leave time, if they could talk to the clinic, say, my kid needs to be seen, I give permission for that, and then have their child go there. People have different needs, but it seems like a lot of the comments are quibbling and upset, and unhappy with what current law is, and the, when a parent does not have to, in Colorado, a child does not have to, over 12, does not have to have a parent's permission for contraceptives, that's a state law, that's not a school board policy, that's nothing that anybody in this room has any control over, and if you dislike that, that's, you're right, but you need to spend your time talking to your state legislator, not to your school board directors. We've talked a lot tonight, and listened a lot, about students needing to be both prepared and supported. I don't think they can't, an anxious student, a depressed student, a student who's sick, can't be prepared if they don't have access to healthcare that doesn't require them to miss a lot of school if their parents want them to have it. Thank you.
Up next, we have, did you say it was Whackley?
Whackley.
Whackley? Ms. Kirsten Whackley, and then I also apologize, number 24, I don't know if it's Robin, or... But we'll get to that.
My name is Kirsten Whackley, and I really do want to thank you all. I am impressed with District 51. I've been a homeschool mom for about five years, I am a single mom, and putting my kids back in school because of medical problems that I am having, was a very hard decision, because I do not agree with what is happening with the school system, so I'm one of those that pulled my kids out, and said, nope, you aren't going to make these decisions for my kids. I am a parent, and I signed on to that for the rest of their lives, and I'm not trying to hand that off to anybody. That's a privilege, and that's an honor, and I can say right now, I probably made about $25,000 for the past five years, so low income, yes, did I sign up for food stamps? No, medical assistance, yes, but I will tell you, I've had to make really hard decisions in order to be a part of my kid's life, and that's an honor and privilege. Those trips to the doctor's offices, those trips to counselors are important, they're vitally important, discussing, why are we going to the counselor? Was this the right counselor for you? Should we try alternative counselors? Was this the right doctor? Did you feel comfortable with the doctor? Should we try other doctors? These are very important decisions that I want to discuss and prepare my children for adulthood, that we don't just simply go to a doctor, we don't just simply accept what a psychologist has to say, that they are diagnosed with something. We try all the things that are out there, vitamins, diet, and yes, this takes a lot of time. I live in a two-bedroom apartment, and right now, we're not making much money, but I'm not looking for ways to pass on the honor and privilege of not being a part of my child's life. So I step into the demographic of, yes, my husband, my ex-husband, we were raised by beautiful parents, and we were raised within the church, but yes, my ex-husband did fall into the category of having to go to prison. At no part was I trying to hand that off to the state. I decided to step up whatever I could, move in with my family, you betcha, whatever it has, it takes, to be a part of my kid's life. And I've got a son that is now a senior, and I have worked part-time because of health issues, it's been beautiful, it's been absolutely incredible, and I do not regret not having things, materialism, to, instead of having that time with him. They're amazing kids, and they're going to go out there and they're going to do amazing things, because I didn't hand it off to the state, I didn't hand it off to the medical profession.